You've got knuckles.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Oregon City Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 13th. And at our meeting today, we have just one item on the agenda. So, our procedures will be a little bit different. Good evening. I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Daphne West, Commission President.
James Nacida, City Commissioner.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, City Commissioner.
Thank you. The item that we have this evening is to make our local preference, actually. Our local aspiration in Oregon City. A recommendation has already been forwarded to the county commissioners and to the regional reserves meeting where, actually, I'll be voting on it tomorrow morning. But this evening, we want to be clear about our aspirations. We have areas around the city of Oregon City that we've been talking about for a number of weeks. And that's what we're -- we want to answer the questions everybody has and then we'll actually take a -- expect to take a vote this evening on our local aspirations. And I think what I would like to do is to consider the areas in groups because there's some areas I think about which we have no questions. So, we might as well move those and then pull out those for which we have questions for -- to get those questions answered and take those separately. I have two people who've come to speak. Is there a staff report first on that? Are we planning -- Dan, Drenlaw, Community Development Director?
Yes, just a brief update.
Sure.
Again, this topic was discussed last week at the regular commission meeting. And the Regional Steering Committee, at their last meeting on September 23rd, took recommendations from the cities to the counties. And again, this is a process where the county -- each of the three counties in Metro are making the final decision on this. And they're -- they've asked for the city's input on where the urban or rural areas should be. And on the September 23rd, Mr. Nacida and I were both at that meeting and we presented Oregon City's recommendations at that time, which I'll go over briefly. And they're actually pretty close to what we've been talking about thus far. But just--
Wait, correction. Can I get some clarification?
Commissioner Nacida.
I don't know if we presented Oregon City's recommendation. I think--
We verbalized them, perhaps.
We talked about what was under discussion in Oregon City.
Yes.
Because we hadn't made a decision because we're making that decision tonight.
Okay. The county has essentially made a decision on it.
Yeah, actually, the county makes the final decision. It's my understanding that the Board of County Commissioners has made a -- at least a tentative recommendation on the areas. And also, the CEO for Metro has made some tentative recommendations, which, again, both the county and Metro's recommendations are pretty similar to what we were looking at today. And I'm going to go over those subtle differences. I just wanted to point out the map that's on the easel to take us back from where we started. The area in the -- both the pink and the blue were the areas that the county initially analyzed for urban reserves. So, you can see that we've come a long way from that initial map. We've actually reduced the area significantly from what the county originally had. And again, that map changed through a process where the county had an extensive public outreach program. And they also had a policy advisory committee that made recommendations to the county commissioners. So, the county's been going through this process for several months now. Nancy, could we have the map with the numbered areas on it? Okay, so, a reference again to the map. These are areas that are not -- that are unique to Oregon City. We broke the area into smaller areas in the county just so we would have a ability to have a more detailed discussion. Area 1 is the southern area of -- the southern area of our existing UGB. And again, we brought those areas in because -- or we're recommending those areas be urban because they're flat, they're easy to serve. And I think everybody was in agreement about those. Area 2 is the Beaver Creek area. That area originally was much bigger. This is -- the boundary you see there is reflective of the county commissioner's recommendation. And it's the area that we last looked at when we had the joint work session with the planning commission.
It's Henrissi Road, essentially, area.
It's the Henrissi Road area. That's correct.
Lot off each side.
And the other thing I was going to mention, as after I go through these, Tony will talk a little bit about the topography maps. I know one thing you asked for at the last meeting was the topography map, so we'll go through those also. Area 4 is the Thera Road, Maple Lane Road. That's an area that I think we -- seems to be some consensus on where we're recommending that be urban. The county originally had that urban. It slipped off their maps for some reason. It sounds like the county is willing to add those areas back.
Which ones?
Area 4, the purple area. Area 3, we've had a lot of discussion about that. That's the Holly Lane area, the Newell Creek Canyon area. I think there's still some discussion to be had about whether Newell Creek should be in our urban reserve or not. And I think that big question was who can do a better job of protecting that unique natural area? Whether we think we can or whether we think the county can. Area 5 is an extension of that Park Place area to the east along Holcomb Road. And I don't think we've had a lot of disagreement on that area. Area 6 is an area that's currently recommended to also be urban. That was an area that we, as a group, thought should not be brought in. And then, a couple of discussions ago, the topic was brought up about, well, what about Kanema, the area along 99E? Could that support some potential job-producing lands? So, we divided that area into two, Area 7 and Area 8. Tony talked a little bit about those at the last meeting. And one of the issues there was, particularly for Area 7, is if we ever want to get a connection from South End Road down to 99E, it would probably be wise to take a look at that area. And Area 7 also does contain a bowl, a relatively flat area, and a small portion of that that currently has some commercial and industrial-type uses and could possibly be expanded in the future if we thought that was the way to go. So, with that, I think -- Tony, do you want to talk a little bit about the topo maps that we have?
Before you continue--
Commissioner Nacida.
Madam Mayor, I have a procedural question. Given the fact that the county is -- has made a tentative recommendation, to what extent is the discussion tonight going to have any impact on what happens tomorrow? Can you advocate as our representative--
Of course.
-- to do something different than the recommendation of the county?
Well, likely what I would do would be to talk to the -- to Commissioner Charlotte Lehan, who is the rep, if our recommendation differed, to see what her opinion was. I think both Dan and maybe Commissioner Neely and I, I think, know where some of their bottom lines are. But I know that they're probable -- that we -- and it kind of depends on where we go. But it's late in the process. But yes, no, I'm paid to be your advocate. So, I mean, that's what I'm doing tomorrow. So, we'll see. And I don't really know the answer to that. Go ahead, Tony.
Thank you. And as you may recall, just to give a refresher, we also color-coded each of these areas. And then, we utilized that color coding in determining what the developable land was. So, for example, on the Area 3, this green area, everything that's not colored green is either owned by Metro, owned by another state, county, power line easement, or there's a water resource area, or a steep slope. So, these colors -- the areas that do not have any color that are inside the area would be considered not developable. So, we took those out of our calculations.
So, I just think it's important to point out how much Metro owns in that area, both on both sides of the highway.
213, correct. Yeah, Metro owns quite a substantial amount of property. Here's 213 going north-south. This is all Metro property, Metro property, Metro property up in this area as well. So, in your commission packet, you did receive a memo from me dated October 7th concerning Tree Protection Forest Practices Act and Forest Property Tax Deferral. We kind of briefly touched on it last Wednesday. If you do have questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm not going to go through that memo again tonight. I just put on your dials tonight and enter it into the record. We put together the drainage basin map for the area for all the drainage basins that we had information on. As you can see, we are missing some information up around the Park Place area. But in general, you can see all the drainage basins that exist around Oregon City and how the proposed areas that we're looking at relate to those drainage basins and which way they go. So, if you do have a question about that, we can come back and talk about that as well. And then--
I think I painted my map. We're about to subgrade it.
He went outside the lines.
Explains all the lines being missed.
Yeah.
In response to Commissioner Nacida, we did provide in your packets, and you did -- I hope you did receive the color copies of -- there's two maps for each area. One of them represents just an aerial photo with the tax lot maps. And then, the second map of the area would be the slopes for the area. So, there wasn't a whole lot. It sounded like there was consensus concerning Area 1. This is why we drew the boundaries where it was. You're picking up as much of the flat area on top before you fall off the edge as you can. Area 2, I think there's still some discussion for the commission to have. This shows the lotting pattern and development that's currently occurring out in Area 2, south of Clackamas Community College, along 213 and Beaver Creek Road. And the second, you can see relatively flat area.
And I think if you look at the call list actually, you can see the -- we already have some urbanization out there. And as Tony said, it is -- compared to the other areas, it's pretty flat.
And I assume I'll just go through this and we can come back and discuss certain areas unless you'd rather stop now and talk about them.
No, no, why don't you go ahead and do a review.
Area 3, this includes 213, Newell Creek Canyon. Still some additional discussion needed on this area. You can see the development pattern along Holly Lane. Pretty -- it's very parceled. And then, when you get into the slope map, you can see the areas actually along Holly, east and west of Holly Lane. It goes quite a ways before you do hit a break-in slope where you start to see that steep slope area to the west of Holly.
Go ahead, sorry.
And I was just going to say, and then obviously, Newell Creek Canyon between the metro ownership and the steep slopes that exist in that area.
And that, just to point out, when we began doing the really detailed work, you'll see to the right of Holly Lane, the very long skinny lots, which go right up to the Waldo Wakers Trailer Park. So, that is one of the, I think, challenges for that area is that the lots are very long and skinny.
Right.
Daphne, or Commissioner West.
On the 3 here, you were saying at the top here, Metro owns this, at the very top?
Yeah. Metro owns, starting at the south here, going north, these properties, a couple properties in here. They do -- they hop across 213 and own a couple properties right in here. They own, I believe, a couple properties up here. This is private ownership on the west side of 213.
Well, this is what I was wanting to -- up there. So, is that the -- not the Tri-City or Tri-Lift? Is Tri -- those businesses on the corner there of Abernathy and Redland, I thought some of those quadrants weren't within city limits, but they must be within our current UGB.
Everything, I believe, along, as you come down Holcomb to Abernathy to the Redland intersection there, that's in the city. The one area you do have is off of Morton. You got -- you do have B&amp;B leasing--
By the hospital.
-- behind -- that is in this area that's outside of the UGB currently. Other than that, there's no commercial that we're aware of in this study area.
Okay, so, it's in the UGB. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. Area 3, this is the topo map. Area 4, I believe we had consensus on this area. The major limitations out here is a major PGE substation with transmission lines heading south, north, and west from it. You can kind of see, other than that, very flat area out here. Area 5, this is just to the east of Park Place, up along Holcomb Boulevard. So, here's Holcomb Boulevard heading east-west, Redland Road heading east-west. Current north end of the city, we extended that line straight across coming along the north edge of the city and then came down. Area 5, I believe there was consensus on this area. You do have--
Looks developed.
-- some steep areas along some of the little creeks, but it's very similar to Park Place concept plan in terms of topography. Next area is Area 6, north of our city limits, between our north city limits and the Clackamas River. I think there was consensus to make a recommendation that it not be designated in this area. We did provide the topography. Unfortunately, on our basin map, we didn't have the information available for this area. But you can see where you've kind of got the ridge coming across here that starts to split north-south drainageways into the Clackamas and coming back down to Abernathy. Area 7, so this is west, here's South End Road, 99E. These properties right along 99E are currently inside of our urban growth boundary. So, this was the area that we were looking at between 99E and South End Road. Metro does own a property in this area. I don't believe there was consensus on where the commission was going.
So, the--
Commissioner Nacida.
Thank you. The area, kind of rectangular area adjacent to the river, that is not in the proposed reserve area--
This one right here?
Yeah, that you say is already in the UGB.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, how far outward does that go, the UGB?
The middle of the river.
I believe this is the line--
Oh, the blue line is--
Yeah. It's the middle of the river.
That is just--
Commissioner Neely.
The history was, this used to be in the UGB. And this was taken out. And the Mobile Home Park up off of Thera was brought in as a swap.
And what were the reasons for taking this area out?
I've -- it was a long -- I haven't pulled the file and looked at it. I believe it had to do with--
Is that in the 1990s?
No. This preceded that.
It was in the 80s.
Yeah, this is before I was around here.
Interesting to know that history.
Yeah.
Huh.
Tony, if I might--
Commissioner Neely.
We've got the contours. We probably don't really know the slopes there. If we extend downward from that rectangular area, how long before we're hitting our slope concerns where we wouldn't be able to develop it anyway? It's a difficult -- I mean, we've got the contours, but I don't know what the grades are.
Yes. Downward to the south or this way?
From the river, down below, yeah, this area here.
Yeah. You know, it's -- I think you've got a little area in here.
Yeah.
This is developable as resident -- it's not going to be employment. It's not going to be commercial. You're starting to get quite a bit of grade change there.
And, you know, the tree canopy concerns me here. It's all treed. It looks so much like an urban forest. I hate to see that go. The minimal value, I think.
It is zoned timber in the county and we had discussed the road possibility. You know, in reading the timber code, I have a hard time finding a new urban road as a permitted use. That being said, we haven't done detailed engineering. And I would hate for the reason to bring this and make it urban is because of the hope of a road. And we may be a little bit ahead of ourselves. I think it's possible. I can see it on the aerials where there is existing some type of a logging road, but, you know.
Where would that be?
I don't know. It's interesting. It's in through--
On the--
It comes off of this end, and you can see right through here. And then, it kind of comes down. You lose it for a little bit. And then, it does come down into this area over here.
Now, there's a rectangular lot that's outside the UGB that's fronting 99 there.
Hmm.
Right there, yeah.
Okay.
That's outside the current UGB.
Correct.
UGB is all along the highway.
Right. But it doesn't include that particular lot there. And it does appear to have some development there on the right. But what is that there? Is that the mobile home?
I believe that's a manufactured home park, yes.
Okay.
That's inside of the UGB.
And that's inside.
Yes.
Oh, that's where the limit is?
Inside.
Okay. And then, there's a lot to the left of it that's outside.
This one?
You should see on this map better, probably.
The boa's a contour for that area. Oops.
There.
What's up there?
Kind of the same as the other.
That's why it's in the UGB.
Yeah, that's why it's not in it.
Yeah. This is the other area.
I don't know that we get much gain.
I don't either. That's what I see, too.
But I have to confess, I didn't know until tonight that that area was already in the UGB.
Yeah, I think the question was asked at the last meeting, but, you know.
Yeah, I think we weren't -- it wasn't identified last time, so.
And I guess the question is, yeah, if it should be designated urban or maybe not designated and leave that ability to come and revisit at a future date if we ever--
Currently, it's recommended as rural.
Rural.
Okay, Commissioner West.
So, Tony or Dan, do you have any idea of the predicted build-out level of that South End area that could -- I mean, what do you -- there's not much left, is there?
I'm so area -- this area right here?
Area 7, oh, I'm sorry. So, that necessitating a road there, I mean, how much build-out is even left?
Well, there's some.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, there's quite a bit. That's part of the issue.
That's our new concept plan.
Yeah, that was going to be our third concept plan with the South End Road. There's several hundred acres.
Oh, I know I'm thinking that because I'm just thinking of what's in the expansion. You're right, there is a lot.
There's several hundred acres.
That's already in the UGB, sorry.
Yeah, but not annexed.
Not developed.
Not developed, yep, yep.
Or annexed.
So, the -- at the top of--
Commissioner Nacida.
At the top of all that topography where the flat land is, yeah, is that what you're referring to? That's in the UGB and subject to a future concept plan?
Yeah, the South End concept.
That was taken in in 2002. And that's our concept plan that's as yet planned. But the money is set aside. Okay, next.
Okay, well, last one would be Area 8. I believe there was consensus. This is south of Area 7 along 99E that we -- this wasn't appropriate for urban.
Yeah. And we also were limited there. Metro's made investments in that area in terms of open spaces, and it's a real nice natural area.
It's good to see the map, though, for seeing that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Ready? Are you through, Dan? Okay, any questions? So, Tony?
Just a review I heard. Did make sure everybody agrees. General consensus on 1, 4, 5?
Yeah, I'm going to--
Oh, you're going to do that?
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to have a -- yeah, is there any objection to the current designation of Area 1, Area 4, Area 5, and actually omitting Area 7?
6 and 8.
6 and 8, yeah.
Oh, excuse me, yeah. So, including Area 1, Area 4, Area 5 as urban reserves, omitting Area 6, 7, and 8.
Yeah.
All right.
And would that be recommending a rural or a no designation?
Oh, for 7, let me -- I'll pull that out in a sec.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay.
We have consensus for that.
We're omitting that from urban reserves, anyway. So, actually, I guess we should have just an informal motion so we can have it on the record.
So, move.
Area 1, okay.
Well, let's hear it.
Moved by Commissioner Neely that Area 1, Area 4, and Area 5 be included as urban reserves.
And 6, 7, and 8 not be.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner West. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, let's consider Area 7.
Mr. Patterson, do you want to say something now it's too late?
I just wondered if you wanted to hear from any of the public before you--
Oh, we do, yes. I'm sorry, I had that in my mind. I hope it was not any of those. Oops, did we make the wrong move? Oh.
Well, we can hear the argument and we can take the burden.
I so apologize. I had that in my mind here. So, Noah Winchester and Don Arambula, you both come forward. Okay, try to talk us out of it now.
I'd like to request that these be entered into the record.
Sure, so done. And our tradition is here, you need to say your name and the city in which you reside. And that's all you do?
Mayor Norris, members of the commission, my name is Noah Winchester. I'm an attorney with Black Helterline. I reside in Portland, Oregon. I'm here on behalf of my clients, Joe Spaziani and Steve Piazza, owners of approximately 100 acres in Area 6, Clackamas Heights.
Okay.
Over the last year, I've spent numerous hours working with Community Development Director, Drenlaw, Doug McLean, members of Metro's staff, to discuss the possibility of Clackamas Heights being included as an urban reserve. Through that process, we were able to get Clackamas County to include the area as one of its recommendations.
Could I interrupt you for a second, please?
Yes.
Clackamas Heights means something different to us.
Yes.
So, if you could use the pointer to point out the property specifically--
I thought I was in it.
That would be--
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, they used a designation that is confusing to us. So, if you were able to do that, okay, great, thank you. That would be helpful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The specific property that my clients currently own is found in this area right over here.
Way far out.
Yeah. So, as we've gone through this process, there's been some resistance at different levels. But over time, we found that there was general consensus that it provides such a nice, large, flat area that it really gives you a lot of bang for the buck when it comes to the possibility of development. As I followed this commission's meetings, my understanding is that there was resistance due to three primary reasons. One, protection of the Clackamas River watershed. Two, the question of the transportation connectivity. And three, a question of how you integrate that into Oregon City as a tight community. As we've gone through this, I think that we've attempted to and successfully answered each of those questions. With respect to the watershed, the area itself has essentially three fingers that drain, located here, here, and here, down to the Clackamas. As we've seen this development and proposed it, we've looked at very large buffers that leave all the mature tree stands in place on all the sloped areas, as well as those three fingers that drain into the Clackamas. In addition, based on community development standards that already exist, stormwater management is completely possible to reduce it, to reduce any potential contamination, as well as extreme runoff scenarios to very insignificant levels. With the question of the transportation, we've seen that Metro's looked at a high-capacity transit plan that includes a potential transit line coming down 99 just to, I believe, the west of what we've talked about. It's essentially within one mile of the development itself and could be easily serviced by bus routes, as well as additional traffic lanes.
Now, one mile is the crow flies?
I believe so, yes. If you look at my included Metro's going places, there are two yellow lines, one down 99 labeled 9, and the other one labeled 8, I believe, that comes from Clackamas Town Center.
Yes, I think he's the 205 corridor.
Correct.
May I just repeat that because I-- May I just repeat that, because that seems, that doesn't seem right to me. So, from the Spaziani property that you're talking about, two light rail?
Well, from the area six.
From area six, okay, got it. Thank you.
Right, essentially, as the crow flies, within the center of area six, it's approximately one mile.
Got it, thank you.
When Metro looks at the transit corridors for placement of the MAX itself, there's a one-mile corridor. So, the actual alignment hasn't been chosen and could be moved, potentially, to come through Clackamas Heights, area six. Finally, with a significant jobs area just to the north, and the development of Oregon City to the south, it provides a whole new area that could be opened up for future residents to come and develop. I think that, based on the projections that were discussed at the last meeting, there's very little buffer for any change in circumstances, or additional things that can happen in the future. I mean, it is a 50-year time period that we're looking at, and having an extra 1,000 flat developable acres seems as though it would be a nice buffer to provide Oregon City.
Thank you.
I've got another handout. Don Arambula, Crandall Arambula, and I live in Portland, Oregon. And what I want to hand out to you is something that is really, if you were to consider this and include it in...
You're talking about the same property?
Yes, the area six area. One of the models that we're developing in the US and Canada right now, we're in fact just finishing up a rail transit corridor plan for the city of Edmonton, looking at over 50 transit stations and five corridors, is ability to create what we call balanced center development. And I think the key component of this is, as you look into the first page, is the opportunity of linking into that regional corridor. This is one of the few options in your city where you can be linked into the regions, transit system. As Noah pointed out, it is a mile corridor. There is no concrete plan where that would go. But for that to move off of 205, which we know is where they currently have that located right now, would require a bold move. And so, we're saying to make that happen, you need to have a bold plan for that. And at this point, we haven't developed anything concrete with the property owner or any other property owners, but we do agree with Noah that you do have considerable amount of land, and if you were tried to create a center that would serve Clackamas County and be a contributor to your existing downtown core, within transit distance, within bus distance, and hopefully, what we're doing now is also linking bicycles into the system, in a Copenhagen or an Amsterdam types of system, you've got the ability to do that here. And we've had some success and experience in these sorts of greenfield developments. I was the designer for the Ranco Station area here in town, so we understand the challenges with this site, and know it's not going to be easy, but it might be worth your consideration to think about this, because it is strategically located. Because if you look at the second page, we talk about some of the issues we know with global warming, with climate change and peak oil, the linkage to these transit systems become more and more important. And so, for these to work, you need a mile radius, which is what is generally this property area, to do a balanced community. That might include the things that you see on the page three, those things where jobs occur, where housing occurs in balance, and also all the amenities, such as churches and schools, to create that, what we describe as a hotspot, or as a balanced, counterbalanced to existing downtown, and not to compete with it, but it actually strengthen your existing downtown at the same time. So, here's just some images and other things that are part of that, and we think that it doesn't only make good sense from a community building and livability of your community, but it also makes some sense from an economic standpoint, as gas prices go, and we can give people options to live and work closer to your community, places to live there. The last page looks at what that local stimulus is, if people are not spending money on gasoline, on mortgages, and being able to shop locally. I think there's some advantages that could be extracted from this area, if done well. And we think that is a wonderful piece of land that really requires a competent, fully developed station plan and a strategy for development here. But it is one of the few areas that you have that much land. Looking at your map previously, you've got a lot of piecemeal parcels that are maybe appropriate to add as part of your urban reserve, but this is one opportunity where you have a large piece of land that you can actually create a center that is part of an overall regional growth strategy. And when we look at the region, whether it's Damascus and other areas, those lack one vital component, which is tied to the transit system. This has the potential of doing that, and it may be worth your time to explore that a little bit more.
I'm going to ask a question.
Commissioner Neely?
I think I marked it correctly, but I would like you to indicate the parcel in question.
The parcel that the property owners...
The property owner is...
Right there, the big one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions of either of them? Commissioner West?
I'd like to know what Doug or Commissioner Neely was concerned about on the river drainage, not river, but the drainage to the river, and comparison to what, what, Mr. Crandall said?
Well, my statement, I think, has been fairly consistent. I have problems with the urban growth extending into a new watershed when we have opportunities in current watersheds to actually develop. I think we actually, months ago, knew the interest in this property. I don't know where it was brought up, but I know...
At the PAC. I think I mentioned it, but I appreciate having the presentation, because we didn't know what the plans were.
Right. I guess, though, in terms of the general layout, it's not foundation farmland, I understand that. I don't know if it's even created this important farmland, but all of the parcels you see there appear to be in agricultural production. And we heard of no, I mean, we did get, we did get ag property owners that were coming in to speak to the PAC, but what you've got here is the most distal, pure parcel of land from our current urban growth boundary, is the one where the property owner seems to be interested in coming in. We don't see any other interest in these other parcels, some of them are, well, of course, maybe they're not small, maybe it's the crops that are there, I don't know. But you can see that there's a lot of agricultural activity that's going on there, and I frankly haven't heard any of those other property owners express any interest in being brought into the urban growth area at all.
Noah, I agree with you, and this is the area that I drove with the two county commissioners to look at, and they didn't actually know where the property was you were talking about. But I think I, yeah, I posit that designating, keeping this undesignated, I think, allows for those activities to happen in the future as development occurs. And again, because it's on the edge of that area, I think it's going to take a while to see that and that connectivity to arrive, so I'm...
You know, one of the things that I would point out to the commission is that due to its proximate location to the current UGB, there are restrictions as to what can happen there, even under an undesignated scenario. Under that scenario, there can be no upzoning.
You mean no upzoning, right?
And as a result, it essentially stays in the same state, and that may be what, in the end, the commission decides is most appropriate for that area. But I do know that when we looked at this, there is no significant farming that's occurring up on top of the plateau. And I know that there was at least one other landowner that submitted a letter in support of the area coming in as an urban reserve.
At the region or the county?
Excuse me?
At the region or the county?
I believe it was at the PAC. I believe he sent a letter into the PAC. And it does, as Mr. Arambula pointed out, provide an opportunity that no other area can provide, and we are talking about a 50-year horizon.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Commissioner Nocita?
I have a couple of questions. First, for my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Neely, I'd like, you mentioned that you have heard of this interest before.
I just don't recall where it was.
What's that?
I don't recall where it was.
And I mentioned it, too, too.
Okay. To what degree has this been discussed in other areas like the PAC? Because the issue of, you know, an entire alternative MAX line going through Clackamas Heights, I'm wondering if that level of detail was discussed in these other areas, or was it just the fact that someone had an interest in bringing this area into?
I'm going to try to find, do you remember the U number this thing had?
I believe it was U9, but it's possible it was a lot.
Let me just take a look, see what the recommendations, actually, but the area that was looked at was quite large in terms of the recommendation.
Beyond.
It was U9.
Practically down to Carver, didn't it?
Yeah, U9, actually, this area was covered under, you know, majority said designated close areas, close-in areas as urban reserve. I presume they meant close-in areas to the city.
To Oregon City.
That had a majority vote, seven votes, five votes were going, do not designate any urban reserve, four votes designate entire area urban reserve except Clackamas River Drainage, and, which is, I guess, about what we're saying in a sense. I should say these, I call them votes, and that's not accurate, because people could vote for multiple choices on this, so it was kind of a polling and so forth, so the fact that you've got, you might have had several people voting in any one of these categories. But a small majority actually said designated close-in areas as urban reserve. I guess the piece we're being presented with isn't that close in, but, but that whole area was actually considered.
Next week. Yeah, if I could review, the county actually wanted the whole of areas, recommended the whole of area six be an urban reserve, until the county commissioners and I took the drive through there, and we saw, you know, the difficulty of developing Forsyth Road to urban standards, and the difficulty of the topography, and the existing, serious farms probably being the biggest, but were quite a few active agricultural, small operations in the area, and it seemed to us way more rural, and you can kind of tell by the parcel maps, than the Holcomb area, which is so, that's why we decided that that really should be undesignedated at that time.
And you took this drive with whom?
Commissioner Lee Han and Commissioner Bernard. Prior to the designation.
And I've removed it by myself in conjunction with my PAC activities.
Okay. And now, when you took that drive, did you know about this level of planning that these folks were advocating?
They did, but they didn't know where it was at the time.
Who, they?
Jim and Charlotte, Commissioner Lee Han and Commissioner Bernard.
They knew about this issue with the MAX extension possibility and the discussion with that?
I think they saw that as a...
Yeah, I met with Commissioner Lee Han a number of months ago with Mr. Arambula's associate, George Crandall, and we discussed that with her. We also gave that same presentation to Metro, and at each level, there was interest, and it was a question of, okay, that's going to result in a bridge across the Clackamas, where does that money come from? There wasn't any, there wasn't any no's, and there certainly wasn't any, you know, anything that seemed unfeasible beyond paying for a bridge.
Beyond the money?
But there was that question.
Right. I think the transportation links are a question of a whole bunch of the areas around the region.
Right.
Do you have more?
I have a lot more. I'll let Commissioner West go. Sure, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner West?
I have to admit, I had not thought of it in terms of the proximity to the 224 industrial area, and that it could be a large piece in and of itself, where we're just adding on little slices everywhere else. And so, that does make some sense to me, so I'm waiting to hear what my colleagues say.
Since she brings that up explicitly, here you've got a photograph, that's being photographed, I presume from the north, you're looking at, I presume, some of this industrial area. There's the Clackamas River, there's the Spaziani property up above. The access, this is all Steve's love here, the access is going to have to be way, way over towards 205, or way over to Carver. I mean, it's, and...
Are we past Carver on this?
No, no.
Carver's way over here.
It's over here.
You're going, you're going the wrong way.
Am I going the wrong way?
Carver's over this way.
Yeah.
Towards I-205.
Oh, no, that's from the other, that's from the south. It's just being viewed.
This is a picture from the south?
Yeah, it's from the south.
This is the Clackamas River, isn't it?
That picture, you're at the north looking south.
This is looking south. This is the Clackamas River.
No, that's the Spaziani property you set up.
Right up here, yeah.
Yeah.
What river is this?
That's the Clackamas.
Therefore, we're looking from the north-south, Carver's all the way over here.
Correct.
Right, it's turned.
The access wouldn't be towards Carver, it'd be towards I-205.
Actually, it's turned. I'm map challenged. But I think, as we discussed previously, the connections are difficult. I think building community and building transportation to have a developed, if that parcel were to develop first out there, I mean, I'm not sure how the connectivity with Oregon City would occur. To me, that's a little bit of a challenge.
Well, I'm not sure why you're assuming that that has to develop first.
Well, it's because it doesn't, but it...
There's no question that if this were to be approved and eventually moved forward, it'd have to be sequenced. I mean, there's no question.
Yeah, yeah.
And in terms of the access itself, if the region were to take a really revolutionary step and to plan for a MAX line through there, we actually went as far as looking at slope stability in the IDAR maps, as well as elevations on both sides of the Clackamas. And the elevations are approximately the same, so you span it, if you were going to do that.
Okay, Commissioner Nocita?
I just, procedurally, Dan, when did you become aware of this stuff with, you know, the proposal for the MAX line?
Well, the only proposal for the MAX line I know is the 205.
No, 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 I mean, their proposals, the discussion of the...
Tonight.
You've not been presented this before tonight?
No.
The initial materials that I've given to Dan, looked at the conceptual land use plan for the plateau, but not the inclusion of the MAX line itself.
This information was distributed to Metro and others in the meetings with them.
As well as Clackamas.
So, it hasn't gotten down to a higher level?
Oh, no, 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 and it's conceptual only, it really hasn't gone to any of the committees that, you know, which I said, transportation. Nancy, Nancy Greshar, you haven't discussed it in any of the committees in which you sit in? Yeah, it's conceptual still.
Okay. So, I guess that leads to my last question, then. Once these designations are made in this process, to what degree are they susceptible to amendment in the near future as opposed to 50 years from now?
Good question. That's the question we have put on the table, and it's not been answered yet. We don't know if there's appeal or amendment procedures.
Okay.
You don't know of any yet either, do you?
No, they're set up by statute, and statute can change. Certainly, there's a lot of effort being put into it, region-wide, that idea.
As I asked Metro Council, Dick Benner, about that, and it's just not written in yet.
There's no answer, but other than a long time.
Okay, because I guess my issue is this. The idea of a MAX line not along I-205 is compelling. This area as an urban reserve, to me, is not compelling without the planning, you know, offered in this document, i.e., coordinated planning around a center, a hotspot with a MAX line. Otherwise, to me, it's just more suburban development. And I am sure there's also not in this process any, like, provisions for designation with a contingency. You know, I mean, if we could, A, revisit this after the revolutionary step was made, I might be convinced. I would be concerned that if we designated this urban reserve tonight, based on the hope that the revolutionary step might occur, odds are probably better than not that we'd be disappointed. But, I mean, to me, this is a MAX alignment I would prefer over one down I-205, and should that step be taken, you know, I would want to revisit this. But again, that's probably not in several years, anyway.
From the very brief time I've served on transportation committees, and again, it's very, very brief, the lines, you know, the lines to Oregon City that are being talked about are coming down McLaughlin or 205, because we are regional center, and I don't see a detour... I don't see a detour in discussion at this point. I mean, Nancy, you're, you're way more, that's, this is your knowledge area.
Well, we just, we just, Metro Council just adopted the high-capacity transit, um, plan, which is for the next 20 years. And granted, it'll get revisited every five years, Commissioner, so, but, um, they did not look outside the I-205 corridor, I think, um, for one reason, because there's not much urban land out there, and if this, if this is not designated an urban reserve, it'll never happen.
It's a chicken and egg thing.
Exactly.
Totally chicken and egg thing.
Right, but, but what I, what I mean to say is that if it is not designated as an urban reserve, they wouldn't pursue looking at that because it's too far, and that might be the plan you're looking at in 60 years, not the 20-year plan.
So what you're saying is that if we did not designate this urban reserve tonight, Metro wouldn't even look at it?
We tend to not look at properties outside the UGB for expanding urban services such as high-capacity transit. And, and as a matter of fact, I don't think that Trimat, Trimat has shied away at putting bus on 213 because it's outside the urban growth boundary, up Nile Canyon.
Yeah. Well, see, that's...
And Bill, uh, uh, Mr. Piesman, perhaps you could expand on that, but that's been what, there's so much need within the urban growth boundary, that why would we be planning things outside of that?
Yeah. I was just gonna, when Commissioner Nocita indicated if we designate this as urban reserve tonight, and remember, we're still making a recommendation, and it's going to go through a few more levels.
Let me, let me...
Yeah.
Let me throw it back in, in your, in your, um, do you think that there could be a designation with a contingency? I mean, designating this urban reserve if, you know, Metro shoots a light rail down there, I mean, it just...
I haven't seen a, a contingent designation like that. Is it possible? I, you know, I mean, to a certain extent, it's, it's like pregnancy, either urban reserve or it isn't, um, and, and, you know, could you have, if certain things happened? It's, it's not inconceivable.
There's nothing explicit in the statute that would allow that.
Yeah, to a certain extent, I think the urban reserve, with its expectation of a 50-year horizon, there's a lot of contingencies in just about everything, you know, I did, there's a lot of question about whether we can really look out 50 years and, and really expect that to be true, and there's, so there's so many things in play, that I think there's a lot of contingencies in any urban reserve.
But there's nothing that says we can't make the statement, and we'll be talking about Metro and the county deal with it.
We'll be talking about infrastructure, and, and I, see, I think it's more likely, we're talking about agreements with county as we look at, especially in the New Creek Canyon area, and I think that's more likely than dealing at the regional level because there's so many other factors and competing issues at the, that level.
I was wondering if Mr. Arambula and Mr. Winchester have any ideas on this, because that's where I am personally right now. Um, if there's no hope that a max line would come down here, I wouldn't want a designated urban reserve. On the other hand, I don't know if it's possible to do a contingent designation, to allow that possibility to, to, you know, persist.
Yeah, I don't know the legality and the, the process that goes forward, but we offered this only is because we do know that when you're looking at the, the high-capacity corridors, it is a mile-wide corridor, and there's a lot of flexibility early on right now, nothing has been designated. And for a lack of creative thought of, of growth strategy, you follow path least resistance, which is along the freeway, that's why they go that way. So, yeah, it's cost, and it's going to be high to, to bridge this, and there are impacts, and you want to protect all those wonderful resources that you have with waterways and all of that, and I think those are conditions that you would demand. But on the other hand, you know, you look at the region, where you're trying to balance growth and this urge to move to Washington County, and constantly expand Washington County's urban growth boundaries, and the desire is to get a more balanced approach and get more on the east side and in Clackamas County. Here is one opportunity that you can tie to that system, and, uh, and I think it, it demands that you at least step back and test it at some point, and maybe at some point you decide it doesn't work here, but at this point, uh, it, it may give you an opportunity to, to really create a, a wonderful center that shapes this community over the next 50 years. And, uh, I don't, I don't know if you've applied conditions to it, I don't know, but I think it's worth trying.
Commissioner Neely.
Commissioner Nocita, I, I think I understand your, your position. These are costly, and I think, in fact, the, the political role in terms of planning a, a expensive light rail system in an area that doesn't have urban development for the future, when you probably have people all over the metro area that live in the urban reserves, want to get their piece of the transportation pie, and would probably be unwilling to fund it. I mean, the bridge cost, I'm sure, will be in the many millions of dollars. I don't see how it could be anything but, and just in terms of the bridge alone. The imbalance in Washington County is industrial land there and not here, it's not residential land here. I mean, it's, the imbalance is, we got the, we got residential land proportional to, uh, employment land that's a lot less than Washington County has, so that's the imbalance. Uh, if you're to convince me this to be a great area for employment land, then I might reconsider a bit, but again, you can't see a bunch of trucks going down Forsyth Road, and it's very difficult for me to visualize that happening, so that's actually where the imbalance is.
For Clackamas River Drive.
Two, two things that I'd like to point out. One, with respect to, you know, approval with conditions, approving this as an urban reserve does not necessitate development.
Yeah, no, we understand. Yeah, no, we understand the restrictions.
And so, and so the, you know, the, the condition already exists there. I mean, it would not only need to come inside the urban growth boundary, but it would need to be annexed as well.
Yes, yeah, no, we understand the limitations.
Secondly, with the Sunrise Corridor directly across the river from this area, in addition, I think there was a story in the news today about Camp Withacome potentially being redeveloped. Uh, there is opportunity for employment, I mean, close by employment, and, and this area being developed provides a lot of, I mean, there'd be a mixture on, in this kind of development if it were to occur, but it also provides housing for all the people that could be working along the Sunrise Corridor and Camp Withacome.
You said Oregon City would be getting the Clackamas River.
The benefits. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your testimony tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, um, let's, is there anyone that wants to change their vote on the, on Area Six?
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and move, um, because I want some out-of-the-box thinking on this, that we designate Area Six as a urban reserve contingent upon Metro, um, designating, um, the area for a max line.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Rooted by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Um, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support this. I, I think that the transportation challenges are so huge in the area, not just for the max line, but get in, getting into the area and connecting it with Oregon City, that to me, it's not realistic in the first, first 50-year horizon.
Fifty years.
It's the 50 years we're talking about.
Fifty.
Yeah.
Well, uh, okay, I gotta say something.
Commissioner West.
You know, as you were just saying, Camp Withacome possibly being redeveloped, well, coming right up in Park Place now is that what we call Clackamas Heights, the, or Clackamas Manor, and the proposed density and change for that, and sidewalks along Holcomb, things are changing. Things could change, and I just think, I hate, I hate to limit. You don't have to develop it, you don't have to bring in the UGB, you don't have to annex it, but I'm always, you know, well, I'm on the side of try to work with it.
And do we want Oregon City to be that big? I mean, I think we, right now, have a really, a difficult time creating centers and, uh, building community in the Holcomb area. I mean, I know that we're working on the neighborhood development kind of plat, so, I mean, to me, that's a stretch. I, I just think that's, um, that's difficult.
Fifty years.
It's, it's, yeah, that after 50 years, I think that we might be ready to look at, look at that, but, I mean, we haven't made any progress on the area that we brought into the UGB in 2002, um, and the region hasn't actually either. Um, so, Commissioner Neely.
True, it's designated, urban reserve does not guarantee anything, it has to be annexed first, but the overall expectations of the property, yeah, property owners, once they're in the urban reserve, I think will change dramatically. And, uh, um, I doubt if the development that would occur in this particular area would support the cost of the light rail and the bridge going over the Clackamas River.
Yeah, that's what I have to...
Something way up there, with something way down there, and you're going over the river.
It's still costly. Commissioner West?
Well, I have a whole, a problem with this whole process in general, whether it's this piece or the next piece, because in 50 years from now, the property owners aren't going to be the same as the property owners now, and more than likely, and, uh, so we're making choices for...
We are.
People that maybe have a different opinion in 50 years.
Yeah, that, that's, so to be undesignated is to, is to...
That would be the case for Areas Four and Five as well. It would be the case of all of it.
That's what I said, all of it, all of it.
Yeah. And I think that, um, you know, to, to think, to think in 50 years is, is difficult at best, but I think, uh, to, to think about the, our, our ability to serve it with infrastructure is a very key piece, I think, of that. And we'll be discussing infrastructure tomorrow morning, too.
Recall the question?
Yes. Is there a, is there a further comment or discussion? Hey, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner West?
No.
Mayor Norris?
No. So, that will remain undesignated then? Okay, let's con, uh, talk about then Area Two, the Henrisi Road area. See, Commissioner Neely, I think that's one you're not supporting.
Well, it's not the one that I'm going to die on my saber over, uh, in, in any case, but...
It'll rattle your saber, though, right?
No, I've, I've rattled it, I don't know if there's much more that I need to say about it. Um, um, it's, it's simply expanding into an area in which there has been minimal, and I know we've got a neighborhood association, uh, started out there now, that's happened in the past, didn't last very long. The connection of people in, in that particular area to the rest of Oregon City is just not a strong one, and, and we're moving out. My feeling is that my preference would be to keep a buffer area in between Oregon City and the community of Beaver Creek, um, let the next 50 years go by and see if the Beaver Creek's image of what it wants to be actually occurs. If it doesn't, then something else could be looked at. But I also have had this problem with jumping watersheds. It's true, this, it's true that we extend a little bit into the Beaver Creek, uh, watershed in this particular, already, but, um, we're predominantly in the Coffield watershed in that particular area. The extension, I think, if you were to accept a designation of the Coffield watershed area, you would cross that intersection at Henrisi Road and, uh, and Beaver Creek Road, but not take in that whole swath that we're talking about. Um, I just have a problem with jumping watersheds.
And, uh, to me, to me, uh, let's see, it's three miles from Henrisi Road to Beaver Creek, and when you look at the land, the, the larger plats, there's such a natural break that, um, uh, that, to me, that is, it, it looks urban, it's, it's directly connected to the, the dense development along Beaver Creek Road here, and, um, it just seems to me that it belongs as part of the city with the, with the buffer then, a really natural buffer that applies, again, three miles from here to, to Beaver Creek, so...
I, I have...
Commissioner Nocita?
I have a question because it, um, Mr. Piesman, do you have, have you gotten a copy of these, um, area photographs with the...
No, I haven't, I haven't seen the...
I think they're up on the board. Yeah, they're up here.
These properties are outside of the urban growth boundary, and yet they look like typical suburban subdivisions.
That's my point.
Is there, is there a chance that they were illegally permitted at some point?
I suppose it's a chance, but my, my guess is they're, they've been there for a while, and that they were county subdivisions that were done a while ago. They might predate...
Well, these are the ones that, where we think this, this object tank may fail, and so they could be unfriendly annexations actually along the way, or they could change their own, but that, that's kind of one of the issues in, in that area.
The, the other issue is, recently, if you look at the map on the east side, you see that little white dot, that's actually our, our water tank.
Oh, right here, outside?
So if we, so we should, the county actually recommended...
Would you point to that, Tony?
Oh, okay, I see it now, on the very right.
Uh-huh, right there.
Yeah. I, recently, I talked to the county, and they suggested that we add a couple of parcels if we bring this area in, one is our, our own water tank.
Oh.
And the other one is, the line goes right through Aloufman Church, right?
Oh, hey, who drew that line? Tony?
Well, makes you wonder what the county did with that application.
So, I mean, you should probably square it off.
That's weird.
Newish church.
Well, that's, um...
That's a, that's a detail.
That's a detail.
Yeah, that's a detail.
That's what the church gets for building outside the urban, urban growth boundary department.
Yeah, do you have a question? Commissioner West?
Well, I was just going to have a, make a comment that that's what I heard at the C4 retreat, too, from, uh, Mr. Andreen, is to bring that piece in.
Yeah.
The other issue that, you know, we thought that bringing in some of this was, could be supportive of whatever happens in the concept plan.
Concept plan, yeah.
Because we're looking at employment and some, it's a cluster, right?
Okay, may I have a motion on this one, please?
Um, uh, I'm...
Commissioner West?
I move approval of, um, Area Two on the urban rural reserves map to come in or to be designated as urban reserves.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nocita?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes, motion fails, three to two.
I will, I know you'll be defending as well, my guess is the, we will not prevail in this argument.
I know, I, my guess is that...
And, and I recognize that as a fact.
It looks like...
And that's not, that's not the, that's not the area I'm going to throw all my energy into, that's still coming up.
Yeah, no, I agree. Okay, let's, uh, then look at Area, the only remaining one is Area Three to talk about. So, um, this is the New Creek Canyon area, again, a lot of it is designated by, as, as Metro, and if, I mean, I think an argument for this one as an urban reserve is that it's, it's now almost totally surrounded by, by the city, it's just, there's a, just a small opening that it is not, and, um, that if Doug's, Commissioner Neely's argument about, um, people paying property taxes and not receiving services, we can, we can draw boundaries that exclude it if we wish to protect the areas that, um, that we want to protect, to exclude , uh, people who don't want to be annexed into the city. Uh, so we've done that, we've done that a lot of times, but the majority of the area to the left, to the west of Holly Lane, is, um, undevelopable land at this point, and we have really beeped up, beeped up our ordinances and, um, to protect areas such as this. Commissioner, who had a question? Commissioner Neely?
Let's see, what's he going to say?
The notion that we can protect it better than the county, I think, is highly questionable. Um, I think Charles Spady pointed out the more than 60-day sewer spill in New Creek Canyon from our facilities. Uh, it's true, I'm sure we're doing a better job of monitoring it, we've got the issue of slides of buildings that we promote, sure we changed our code. But the notion that we bring this in as an urban reserve, and then arguing that there are some minimal areas that can actually be brought into an urban development standard, suggests to me that we say the only natural areas of value are, are, of natural areas that are valuable for natural areas are only if they have steep slopes, or only if they're in, in the areas of a repairing the watershed corridor, the, a river stream corridor. Even if there are flatlands that can be developed in this area, what's wrong with having our natural areas include some of those upland... natural areas include some of those upland areas? If we're gonna take this in as an urban, as an urban reserve and then we all agree we're never going to annex it, then why isn't it urban reserve? It makes, it makes no sense to me. The island notion, I don't think is very germane, because the argument of islands is issues where you've got actually lands that are developed to urban standards, essentially.
Around it.
And we've surrounded it. This is not going to be developed to urban standards. It is not an island in the sense of it not being connected to the rest of the natural corridors. We've got 200, we'll have 200-foot natural buffers along Abbot and Athie Creek to any new development that goes there. So, we're going to have natural corridors that directly open into Newell Creek Canyon. And so, the island argument, from my standpoint, is an argument that only applies to properties that can be urbanized. That's when you annex them. This, this cannot be annexed. If you, if you, if you declare this as an urban reserve, then people are going to want to see their properties that are adjacent to it, to whatever's sent to be developed to urban standards. I've heard no arguments from anybody in Newell Creek Canyon saying they want to be included in an urban reserve. Not one. We've surely heard arguments through many, many years of, of the arguments against urban development in Newell Creek Canyon. And I just feel that, that this is not an appropriate area to bring into an urban reserve. Now, there'd be some discussions of what you do about Forest Park areas around the Portland area. This is a very different situation. Forest Park is above the urban area. You're gonna have sewer, sewer stuff flowing into uphill into Forest Park in the Portland area. This is below the elevation of Oregon City. This is where our stormwater goes to, this is where, where we have the possibility of sewage failures, as we've had, major ones. And those are things that we haven't protected Newell Creek Canyon sufficiently. We don't have a good record. This is not, I'm not criticizing anybody in staff. I know the staff feels strongly about Newell Creek Canyon as I do. And maybe they feel that we can offer the protections that we're talking about. But the fact of the matter is, most of that land can't be brought in. It's not going to be taxed as city property. And if we're not going to bring it in, if we're not going to annex it, why are we giving it an urban status? There's nothing wrong with having a rural park that is within the city limits that does not belong to the city.
And I, I have agreed with you so strongly up until this point. So, I am, I am questioning because as many of the environments that I respect have looked at that area now, I mean, nothing, nothing that, annexing it or not doesn't prevent sewer spills, or doesn't prevent the same slope issues that we have now. That's, that will happen because we shouldn't have, shouldn't allow those developments in the first place. The, the, if, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it as a, as a rural reserve, if we think that that's the adequate protection for it.
What protection can we give it to? Yeah, I haven't heard you say that yet.
Well, I said that, I said that over and over again, that, that to do an environmental overlay like the city of Wilsonville, for instance, has. The, the county commission, I, I'm not sure what they'll do with that. I mean, they're gonna think we're crazy if we don't, if we don't keep it, because they see it as a treasure that, that, that because we surround it, it's, we're the watchdogs of it. And that we should, we should do all within our power to keep it, you know, the way that it is. The, I appreciate the information that Tony's put together on forest practices and the ability of, of a homeowner, or a property owner, not homeowner, a property owner to be able to do a conservation easement, or be able to do, you know, we have property tax reductions because of Forest-
Protection Act.
Protection Act on that. But no, I'm, I'm, I mean, I've been, I've been debating that. It's just, it's, and this is the first year that I would even consider as an, as an urban reserve. And, you know, if I'm satisfied with it, that we can protect it because it's where the eyes and ears of, of the community are, then, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do that. Because we do, we do, the pressures of urban development are around it. And that won't change, because we are surrounded on essentially almost four sides. There's just one little piece that it, that it isn't. And then, then the other issue is, what do we do about Holly Lane?
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll put a motion forward in terms of Holly Lane. That's not a concern of mine.
Well, I, I'm not sure that I like a strip that just goes down the middle of a rural reserve, though, because I don't, I'm not sure that that can pay for itself. Commissioner Nacita?
That was the point I was going to inquire about, because Commissioner Neely's discussion focuses on Newell Creek Canyon, but there's this whole issue of Holly Lane as well. And I would like Commissioner Neely to give his thoughts on Holly Lane.
I would like, I would, actually, I'm gonna turn it back, I'm gonna turn it back to the mayor, and I'll pose the question this way. We're talking about urbanizing, putting the urban reserve, the urbanization part of Holly Lane. You say that won't pay for itself. Well, where's the additional property gonna come in that's gonna pay for it? It can't go into the canyon on either side of it.
No, I agree.
So, that, that, that's, that's an odd argument from my standpoint. The, the development that occurs along Holly Lane is going to be the development that contributes to the payment. You're not going to have, you're not gonna have properties down in Newell Creek Canyon or down on the other side. I don't know what the name of that particular canyon. I don't think it's Semble Creek. But whatever canyon it is, that they, they aren't going to, we're not gonna permit development down there, so they're not gonna pay for it.
Well, the problem I have is, when you look at the map, on, the Area Three map, with the, with the plot lines-
I understand that.
I'm not sure, I mean, you, you have to take in a whole bunch, and to me, that impacts, it impacts the canyon, as it goes, some, some of that area goes almost all the way to 213.
I'm not going to argue, I, I do not support the argument of staff that you have to put the thing on property lines. I don't agree with that statement.
Well, it's, we haven't heard that together. Talk about the difficulty or the complexity of cutting the properties. If we just did a, I don't know what you'd do, a quarter mile, or, I don't know, which, which, I don't know how you designated-
Topo line, elevation.
No, 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 no. He's just talking about a thin strip on both sides. That's what Doug is talking about. And-
I'm talking about flat areas that can be urbanized on both sides.
Right, and that would be a topo question.
That'd be a topo question.
Okay. And before, it was, you had drawn it just as a really skinny-
No, this is what I've read from you in terms of the recommendation-
I know, but I didn't see a picture. I haven't seen a picture.
Well, I, we, I, I think you have to draw it along topo maps. I mean, but the argument the staff puts forward is that you, you can't, you can't split property lines in terms of what's in the urban, in the urban reserve and what's not.
I guess I'm not putting forward that you can't. I'm putting forward that it creates a whole lot of land use issues further down the road for the, for the property owner, of which they have no remedy.
You discussed that, you discussed that a little bit more.
You know, if we've got a 10-acre piece, and you, and you, and you bring in eight acres, you leave two acres outside, I don't believe they can go in and do a partition of that property.
Here's, 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 here's what I can put forward. That we annex in those properties, those properties in total, that are, have flat areas along Holly Lane, which would include the whole, if that's the issue, the whole, the whole pieces of property, because we're not gonna let them develop on the slopes anyway.
And I believe that's what we've put forward.
That's, that's green out here.
No, you've got the whole, whole of three as an urban reserve. I'm rejecting that. I'm rejecting the whole of three as an urban reserve. And I'm saying to take as the whole, as the urban reserve, those properties that include flat areas on, on either side of Holly Lane.
Which is essentially this whole green, this whole green area.
Well, it'd be easier to say-
This whole area here is Area Three.
No, 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 no. We're talking about it split, though.
Well, we were before. We were talking about bringing all of, all of Newell Creek Canyon in as an urban reserve.
Yes.
And this is not the same thing I'm proposing.
No, but we, but we've talked about this before, about split, about splitting it.
Okay, now what I'm suggesting is, I'm going to avoid the problem. All, all property owners, the, we can put the line for all property-
Essentially this.
-parcels that have lands that are buildable along Holly Lane. So, you can include all those pieces of, those, all those properties along Holly Lane only, that in fact go into the steep areas. And we can then seek to recommend to them to, if they're developing it, to look at conservation easements under the city.
Yeah, and that's essentially this green part here. When you look at the map on-
I'm not sure.
Are you, are we kinda maybe looking at a, at a 3A on the east side of 213, and a 3B on the west side of 213? And then we get into the-
Mm-hmm. Okay, become 3A and 3B.
Now, but I do not, I don't want to necessarily assume, do all the properties there go all the way down to 213? I don't think-
No, no, no.
Not quite.
So, it's just those properties that, is that, but Maple Lane or are, are in flat areas.
I have a question.
Commissioner Nacita?
Tony, what is that strip that looks kind of like a snake? Is that the old railroad right of way?
Railroad right of way.
That's the railroad, okay.
So, some of those properties do go through that railroad right of way?
Well, that's in private, it's been abandoned. Some of it's in private ownership, some of it's in public ownership.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, yes, Mr. Madison.
Who are you? Not wanting to really jump into this, 'cause whatever, right. But let me, let me, I guess I have a question, and I don't know why we haven't ever talked in this term, because I think all of us are interested in preserving that piece of the canyon that is natural. But it would seem to me that if you brought that area in, that you could then go back, and you might have to talk about how you purchase a portion, and then designate those areas you want to protect as a city park. And, and you could even put that in the charter. And if you develop the right type trail system through there by putting the ability of folks to access, move in, we would probably notice things like sewer leaks and things like that earlier than what they're noted now without that type of traffic going through there. And you get the protection you're looking for, and you don't get into all this, these other issues. But-
Actually, it's an excellent idea. However, I know from Ed Sullivan, we can purchase land from outside the urban growth area as a park. I mean, we can do that anyway. If you, if you, if you're gonna bring it in as an urban reserve, they're gonna say, oh, I'm gonna say this is developable land, and I'm going to ask more from the city for the purchase of that property than the rural property owner if we wanted to purchase it as a park.
Right, and you, and you may get into that, but the, the reality is, for us to be able to access any type of infrastructure in that area is, seems to me is gonna negate a lot of that argument, because it's almost an impossibility to get it and do it. Yeah, but I, and you might still run into that, but the question, if there's a way to acquire that and then designate a park, put that in the, in the charter, seems like that's how you're gonna get your maximum protection there than, than leaving it out and letting others decide what may happen with that area over time. But it's just a question, I, you know, just a thought, and it may be some-
Mr. Drenlon?
The other issue, kind of related to that, is it's urban around the canyon, that's done.
Yeah.
It's already urban, and we're gonna have issues of sewer, drainage, and police protection as more people go down there. And I, I don't know if, I mean, it seems like we'd be in a better position to respond to those things if it was part of the city than if it was the county.
Where's the county's, where's the county's sheriff's office located?
Which one?
Where's the main?
Red Soils. It's up at Red Soils.
It's Red Soils now. I think they've been talking about that.
I mean, their police department is as close, as our police department is to Newell Creek Canyon. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, so, I guess that's the question, then. So, we, we think it's better served by the sheriff's department than our own police department.
It's not, it's not a question necessarily of a response. The question is, if you had, again, the right type trail system so that you had folks going through there. One of our problems is the illegal camping goes on down there, and the fear of wildfire in the summers, which, but that's-
The regional trail system that's described that would go through there is going all the way to, in terms of its regional picture, all the way to Beaver Creek on Henneisi Road anyway. I mean, that's gonna be an issue for our regional trails anyway.
Yeah, but sooner or later, some entity has to take it on to develop those in a way that folks can access that.
I agree with you. But the point is-
I just raised the question. Wherever you had one, well, I don't care.
We don't have Parks money to maintain the parks we've got anyway.
Not today, but we're talking a 50-year horizon here.
I understand.
In a lot of ways, the whole 50-year concept to me is, well, it, if we were sitting here in 1959, we're planning the needs of this city in the 80s, 90s, and 2000, I really question what, whether we can do that ourselves.
We can, you know, we come up with the money in some way to purchase properties in addition to those that Metro are, are purchasing, that's fine. But they don't have to be in the city for us to do it.
Now, and we have a little bit of money left over from the bond.
Yeah, if it goes through Metro. But I mean, if this is something that you want to do, a city initiative and not a metro initiative, is you're limited if it's outside city.
I think this is a very difficult issue. It's very, very difficult for me to know, because again, for me, it's the adequate protection.
I'll tell you, we've got, we've got, in terms of our own coenforcement, you've got apartments and residents that face some of the tributaries to Newell Creek Canyon off of Mulalla.
Yeah.
They dump garbage down that canyon. We don't do anything about it.
Oh, actually, we go in there quite often.
Do we?
Mm-hmm, and clean up, yeah.
But do we find anybody in the process?
Well, the folks that you're finding don't have anything to find, but we usually relocate them. But I guess, you know, if it's not-
I'm not talking about homeless people being down there, I'm talking about residents.
That's the biggest issue you have down in there. Yeah, others we do, if we can pinpoint it. But again, I guess I question, if we're not gonna, if this is not gonna be part of the urban reserve or part of the city, I'm gonna have a conversation with coenforcement about whether we're gonna spend time down there. Because that's, you know, it's, it's outside of jurisdiction.
Yeah, why, why but?
Well, the point is, it doesn't become part of the city unless we annex it anyway.
I, I got it.
Commissioner Nacita?
That's true.
Question for Commissioner Neely, looking at the, the topo map of-
Same area?
Of the Area Three. Commissioner Neely, are you looking at that?
Well, I, I'm trying to look for it. Thank you.
It's in the butt.
The sensitive areas of Newell Creek Canyon, for the most part, but not exclusively, are on the west side.
Yeah, and they're mostly metro properties, remember, from the map.
And when you're on the east side of, what is that, 213?
213.
It benches out pretty quickly. And I'm wondering if you're comfortable with just having 213 be the boundary-
We talked about that.
And having the west side left in rural and have the east side in urban?
I guess, I guess, I mean, you do have some properties that are down there, that are, that are down in the canyon there, that don't, that don't come up into the flatter area.
ownership.
They're probably not going to be, want, want to be annexed anyway. Why, why bother?
Go back to the map with, that has metro properties on it. Is that it?
Do we have a map with just Metro?
It's a little hard to see.
Well, the big one that I brought. You could use that.
This one, well, this one. This map, it shows everything in the green color.
That's all metro property. Okay. So, it's mostly, it encroaches a little bit on the east side.
Can we get the, the Area Three up there again? Okay, one more time. So, you're starting, so you've got, this is Metro owned, right? So, that would be these right here.
Those are owned by Metro?
Yeah. Where's that map at?
That is not, this is, this is developed, right here. This is right up behind-
We can look at that, too.
The hospital. So, you come south down 213, these properties right here.
Doug, can you move back just a little bit? We can see, thank you.
These properties right here are Metro owned. This large piece right here is Metro owned.
It's essentially this.
I can't see in your map, Alice. That's too tiny.
With the black, I know, with the black piece, I know. Tony, do you have the map I brought tonight?
Right here.
Is that, is that the one?
Yes.
With the X's on it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Do we have that to throw up on the screen, or do we have handouts of that, or is that the only copy of that?
No, we need to probably-
I'd like to approach that.
How about, may, may we have a, let's take a five-minute break. And so, we can huddle around this.
We're not taking a break from the commission.
Considering what to do with Area Three, which is now Area 3A and 3B, is there further discussion on this?
I'm gonna try my motion.
Okay, Ms., Commissioner Neely?
I move to designate- I move to designate properties that are in part or in whole within the flat areas along Holly Lane to be included in the urban reserve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further, do you understand what you're voting on? Commissioner West.
So I'm not-
Doesn't exclude you from voting.
Yeah, but if I don't vote for this amendment, or this change, that's because I think all of it should be in urban. So I don't want to lose my, so with this motion, will I lose my options?
I will include, I would include as part of that motion, that that is the only area within Area Three to be included, if you wanted that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll include, what is my motion? Will you accept it as a second?
If you'd make it the other way, that would really help us better. It would, I think would help us deliberate, if you would separate them, so that we have an option of choosing or-
Well, I put in my motion expressly to exclude areas that, in the areas in Area Three, that I wasn't included in my motion. She didn't want to be put in the position of voting for that and then having that say anything about her position on-
Well, okay, I misunderstood your motion then, because I thought you were talking about Area 3B as one entity.
I was talking about Area 3B, but not in its entirety. I move to designate properties that are in part or in whole within the flat areas along Holly Lane.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
And to exclude the remainder of Area Three from the urban reserve.
Now, that's a different motion. So is the secondor willing to withdraw from the first motion?
No, it was a secondor, he agreed to.
Okay, all right, so this is a new motion.
And that was to clarify Daphne's concerns to what the motion was.
Okay, so the motion deals with the property in total and designates only the section along Holly Lane that's flat.
No, that's not what I said. Listen to my wording. Move to designate properties that are in part or in whole in the flat areas along Holly Lane.
Okay.
And so I'm avoiding the property split question. The property split question is going to come in part or in whole, is my motion.
Right, so process me a topo lines.
That's right.
Okay.
So I'm avoiding that topo line argument altogether. I presume we can work out with property owners for conservation easements in that particular area.
Okay.
Okay, now, I need, before discussion, we need a second. We're just clarifying the motion.
The second is ready.
No, he hadn't made it yet.
No, he did, that was my exact statement.
No, 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 it was a new motion, so-
No, I made the amendment and he agreed to the amendment.
No, 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 it's not an amendment, it's a new motion. We withdrew the first, so it's a new motion, now we have a new second. So moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And let's make sure we understand what we're voting on.
Can I try and see if we can understand what the flat area of Holly Lane is?
So we'll start, I'm going to start with this map, and I'll go to the topo map.
Okay, I'm unclear too.
This map shows Area Three. Here's 213. Everything in green is area that is not located in a water resource area, and it does not have slopes in excess of 25 percent.
That's right.
What I hear your motion, what I hear is everything east of 213 in Area Three.
Except, I think you've got properties right along 213 that aren't there. That don't go up that far. I thought we saw parcels that in fact-
See, it was front Holly Lane, so to speak.
Yeah, whole Supreme Court cases rise or fall on the definition of a single word.
Okay, we'll make sure we get it right. If I have to redo it, I'll do it.
And is this question, are we using the term a long Holly Lane, adjacent to Holly Lane?
No, that's not, that wasn't my intention.
All right, one speaker, please, at a time. This is important, because staff has to draw the lines if we do the approval here.
Well, how about just the green area east of 213 in Area Three?
Commissioner Nocita, you have a question?
I was just going to propose-
Well, there's a motion on the floor. So it's just, you need to get clarity on what you're voting on.
Okay, I want to either extract some clarity or try to provide some clarity.
Yes, please.
It seems to me that what Commissioner Neely, can we throw up that last map, the aerial that had the fluorescent green part? Okay, so it seems that when Commissioner Neely wants to include the areas along Holly Lane that are flat, there are some parcels in there that don't actually front on Holly Lane. So it would be unclear as to whether they're included or not. Whereas-
It was on my motion.
Because the staff has prepared this map using specific criteria like slope to establish what's developable, a clarifying way to frame this would be to move to bring in the developable area as designated in green on the east side of 213-
Yeah, that's what I've been arguing for.
-in the map prepared by staff.
Will that take into account the concern you had about split properties versus property ownership?
Yes, because our maps were drawn along property lines.
Done that work.
Yes. And as Commissioner Nocita described, that would exclude the metro properties that are on the east side of 213.
Okay.
I'll take that motion as my motion.
Uh, no.
If you want to make it, I'll draw my motion.
Yeah, you have to withdraw your motion.
Are you glad it was brought, withdraw my motion?
First, let's ask if the second will withdraw. The second first, okay. The floor is clean.
If I make the second the motion when he says it.
Okay, Commissioner Nocita, now you may make a motion.
Go ahead.
Am I making the motion?
Now you are, but you just have to quit.
You used the term, the other week you said, no good deed goes unpunished.
Okay, this is easy, though, you just have to use color.
Okay.
The thing is, they're both green, it's just, you just got to say light green.
Line green.
Line green.
Let's see if I can make this work. I'll move to designate as urban reserves the developable lands east of Highway 213 as designated by staff in green on the map of Area Three.
Is there a second?
Second.
I want to get, wait, 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 I want to get staff's concurrence on the clarity of that. Does that work?
I understand that we're going to bring in everything east of 213 except the metro properties, because everything else is-
Developable.
Is developable. A portion of every tax lot is going to be considered developable, and I assume we're taking in the complete tax lot if part of it's developable. That's what I'm hearing.
We have a motion-
That's what that map represents.
Commissioner Nocita, a second by Commissioner Smith. Okay, now discussion. Everyone has clarity on what we're voting on? Commissioner West.
So if I vote no on this, do I get another chance to vote on all of three going in?
Not necessarily.
Well, you could do one of two, you could do two things. One is you could vote yes on this.
Yes, you can vote on this, and you could also vote yes on another one.
We're going to deal with it in two pieces, okay.
Yes, further clarity needed? All right, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Okay, now let's consider the rests, because we have to designate it as something, either urban, rural, or undesignated. It's currently designated as urban in the county's recommendation.
I'm going to invite-
Commissioner Nocita.
Commissioner West to make a motion to her liking. I don't think we're on the same page.
It's all right, that's okay, it's okay.
But if you want, you know, we're aware of what your intentions are, so-
All right, I'm going to make a motion for the remaining properties that are not included in the previous motion to be brought into the urban reserves, because I feel that they would have the most protection there and the most option for trails, and I don't like pockets developing islands, I should say. So that's my-
Okay, your motion is sure-
Wait, 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 please. Okay, so this is the Area Three we're talking about.
The question is the motion. Her motion includes all the factors that went into it. Now, that's a little bit complicated.
Well, it's not, just a second. Not discussion yet, please, because we don't have a second. Have a second to this motion, please? I'll second it for discussion. Okay, now, Commissioner Neely.
Well, my point was, she gave all the factors that went into it in her motion. I guess that's okay, but-
Sure. Do whatever she wishes. Okay. Any more discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Commissioner Nocita.
No.
Commissioner Neely.
No.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner and Mayor Norris. It's okay.
Yeah.
I'm an island.
You can abstain.
No, no, it is not appropriate to abstain.
Huh?
I want that clear. I'll vote no.
Yeah.
I'll vote no. Motion fails for one. Okay, so we need a motion now for the designation of this area.
I will designate-
Commissioner Nocita.
I will move to designate those areas of, those portions of Area Three not designated as an urban reserve to be designated as a rural reserve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Everyone understand the motion and its implications? Okay, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
No.
Mayor Norris.
I don't know.
Oh, dear.
This is so hard. I'll vote no. I'll vote no.
Didn't you then vote no on both? That is kind of an abstention.
No, an abstention, an abstention often means you don't have the courage to vote. And it's really the only reason to abstain often is because you have a conflict of some kind, and so I think it's important to do that.
I think the motion is undecided.
It's easier to defend if I voted with the majority, so that's what I was thinking, because this is going to create a lot of havoc tomorrow morning, let me tell you.
Good luck.
Yeah, okay, that concludes our-
Sorry, clarification on Areas 2, 6, 7, 8, they're not urban reserve. Are they rural reserve or are they not designated?
2, 6-
Oh, yeah, that's right.
May I pose a question?
We need to ask about that.
Are we obligated to vote on its designation?
Well, we need to have a, we need to have a local preference.
Okay.
And it's, again, it's not courageous for us not to make a decision about those lands that affect us. Commissioner West.
I move that Area Two become, remain undesignated.
And Area Six and Area Seven?
No, I'm just going to do two.
Area Two, okay, second. Is there a secondor?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Nocita, designate Area Two as, what'd you say?
Undesignated.
Undesignated.
That's the Beaver Creek area.
It is.
Since I lost on the urban, so then it's undesigned.
Okay, a second, please? Oh, there was, all right.
Just a discussion point. This is consistent with the designation of the whole area that was in, that was looked at by the county. It was not designated rural, and it was not designated urban for the rest of the Beaver Creek area, so it's a consistent designation with the rest of the Beaver Creek area.
Yeah, it's true. Okay, others? Thank you. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Area Six, please, may I have a motion to do with Area Six?
Six is which one again?
It's West Side Road area.
These lands, if I might, these-
Commissioner Neely, the brain, yeah.
These lands were, I think, put forward as part of the conflicted package, was it or not, in terms?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm going to move Area Six be designated as undesigned.
Is there a second?
Sort of.
Is there a second, please? I'll second it. So Area Six under consideration? Discussion, clarity?
Did you not even vote that it wasn't urban?
No, we voted that it wasn't urban.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Nancy, the vote, please.
Wait, I just have a discussion point. On this one, when I drove through the area and saw what was going on, I did think there was enough agriculture going on, like the Sears Farm and other sites, to designate it rural. So if we're not going to designate it urban, my preference would be that it be designated rural, so if this vote fails, I will move to designate it as rural.
As I said, it was, I think it was indicated as conflicted land as opposed to important or foundation agricultural land. There are some small, there are some small parcelization in there, but we'll see how this vote goes.
Okay, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes 4-1. Okay, Area Seven is the last area that we haven't determined. No, Eight we excluded.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Are we going to designate it rural?
We didn't designate it.
We didn't designate it, though, so Area Seven and Eight together.
Seven and Eight together?
We can.
I would like to focus on Area Seven, because I think there's some special characteristics